Pass it down, that's city phone.
You've got an extra city phone than I have.
Good, Jason.
Is this yours, Jim?
No problem.
This yours? Oh, 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 okay.
I think that's the last thing I needed to give you.
How about he's?
I can do that, I usually do, but I'm not offended, Jason. Hi, Becky.
Hi.
Your parents may.
You've been on a rooftop.
We'll hold for that.
I brought one, just in case.
Look at you prepared, I like it, I like it. Just so you know, everybody else has to go with this.
Well, you can say anything you want to. We can't make them, you know.
Open the Oglesby City Council meeting. Roll call.
Augubright.
Here.
Udis.
Here.
Cullen.
Here.
Kern.
Here.
Revara.
Here. Pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments on agenda items only. Having none, we'll move right along. I need a motion and second to approve the minutes from the April seventeen, twenty twenty-three meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. I need a motion and second to approve the revised minutes from the February twenty-first and March sixth meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised minutes from February twenty-first and March sixth meetings.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. I need a motion and second to approve the bills in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents as presented for payment.
I will make a motion to pay bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Anything under old business?
Do that one thing, Dom. We wanted to present you something for your twelve years of service to the city. Really appreciate that as mayor and as commissioner. And roll.
I need a motion and second to accept and place on file the April fourth, twenty twenty-three election results.
I will make a motion to accept and place on file April fourth, twenty twenty-three election results.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Now we'll have the swearing in of the mayor and new commissioners.
Do you want to start with the commissioners?
I don't care.
The commissioners want to come back up? See you, John.
Figure.
Yeah.
Okay, you want to do commissioners first and then do mayor?
Good mayor or me?
Okay.
You do it individually or?
Yeah, everyone, we'll do them individually, sure.
Let's give you the names.
Thank you, Beth.
Not those, because I have good companies, that was just because we added the so-called.
We'll do them over here, I'm going to grab yours, Patty.
I hit one, my cheat sheet this time. You want to read the whole thing, I'm good this time.
You want to repeat after me after you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Aye.
Aye.
Terry Udis.
Terry Udis.
Having been elected to the office of commissioner.
Having been, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Having been elected to the office of commissioner.
In and for the city of Oglesby and state of Illinois.
In and for the city of Oglesby and state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of commissioner.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. So help me God.
So if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
McDermott.
McDermott.
Having been elected to the office of commissioner, having been elected to the office of commissioner, in and for the city of Oglesby.
In and for the city of Oglesby.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of commissioner.
And that I will faithfully discharge the office of commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And again, the end of the year. So, yeah. Repeat after me, Tony. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
Tony Stefanelli.
Elected to the office of mayor. Excuse me.
Having been elected to the office of commissioner.
In and for the city of Oglesby.
In and for the city of Oglesby.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of commissioner.
Of the office of commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you.
If you raise your red hand and repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
Rich Baldridge.
Having been elected to the office of commissioner.
Having been elected to the office of commissioner.
In and for the city of Oglesby.
In and for the city of Oglesby.
And state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of commissioner.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Now we have the mayor. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
Jason Burden, elected to the office of mayor.
Elected to the office of mayor.
In the city of Oglesby.
In the city of Oglesby.
And state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Let's get to work, guys. All right, I wrote a couple things, just so I make sure we didn't skip anything. We got some administrative to take care of tonight. Basically, if you look at the agenda, this is the general flow. Define all the new roles for the mayor, the commissioners, approve them, then assign our new commissioners to those roles. After we define any changes to our various boards and commissions, we'll then appoint all of our officials that need to take oaths. Then finally, we'll nominate, appoint, and confirm all those individuals that, to those boards. These are the items that have to get resolved this evening before city business. Okay, let's get started. First up is ordinance. Amending Title II Administration and Personnel Chapter two-point-oh-three council. So. You want to appoint commissioners first? I think he wanted to say what the roles were first, and then, we're going to define the roles.
I'm just taking them in order.
Yep, we want to define what the roles are and then assign people. So looking at the minutes from four years ago, there was a lot of questions. I think we're going to, I'm going to try to summarize a little bit what the changes we're making here, and I'll give the other commissioners an opportunity to add any comments if they want. So I wrote up in advance, so I didn't miss anything. I'll summarize what we're looking to do here. We recognize that some of the positions were a bit lopsided in scope and responsibility as written. However, we didn't want to necessarily roll everything back to what things were in the previous administration before the last one. There were some good changes, and we think we can capitalize on both. The actual big change here almost looks like we are rolling something back. And that is, we are splitting off the electric department from the streets and public improvement commissioner and moving it back to public property commissioner. While it does separate the utilities between commissioners again, it does offer up a significantly more even distribution of responsibilities. Here are the first two changes from the previous administration that we can keep, that will tie into each other for what we think is a significant benefit. The past administration moved parks and building maintenance out of the mayor. This essentially made it to where the mayor no longer had direct employees to manage. At the same time, they had created the role of HR, but it was put into the commissioner position of which someone had a specific skill, education, and training for. While the creation of HR is important, we wanted to solve a couple of issues with the following change. Since the mayor has general supervision over all departments in the city, the office doesn't necessarily have direct supervision of the departments. That authority rests within the commissioners. We thought we'd keep parks and maintenance out of the mayor, but move HR into the mayor's role. This solves two issues. Number one, it continues to keep the mayor of the, keep the role of the mayor out of the day-to-day routine activities of the commissioners' departments, which indeed is what the spirit of the commission form of government is intended for. And number two, having HR with the mayor and having no direct employees will have the mayor's role be part of hiring, termination, and discipline decisions, which should help alleviate some problems we've seen in the past, as every employee in the city that has full-time benefits will now have some kind of representation by at least two council members if any major changes were to occur. The remaining changes are minor. They're being, they're items that are being shifted into the accounts in finance commissioner. In all honesty, these are all items that either should be in that role or already are actually being handled there daily anyways. Items such as, number one, oversight of building codes and the various inspectors as they already process all the reports and permits through the clerk's office anyways. Number two, sanitation, as it is now covered by a contract, and when there is a garbage pickup missed on the street, it isn't anyone in the health and safety officers' departments tackling the problem, it's the clerk's office already that makes the calls and resolves the residents for the issues. And finally, number three, if there is a bill discrepancy on utilities, it should be the finance commissioner to work out whatever policies or agreements between residents or businesses with the city, not necessarily the commissioner in charge of utilities. While it really hasn't been a problem in the past, we did find it a bit awkward that a commissioner outside of the clerk's office is setting how they spend some of their man-hours. This will resolve all of those items. As the scope of responsibility already sits in the finance commissioner's department. This just assigns the authority, excuse me, this just assigns the authority of oversight with it. So here are all the summaries in a nutshell. Public health and safety, police, fire, and ambulance departments, street and ordinance enforcement, accounts and finance, clerk's office, billing, managing outside contracts, and land development, building code enforcement, streets and public improvement, street, water, and wastewater departments, public property, electric, parks, and building maintenance departments. That is the summary. Does any commissioners have anything to add to any of that? Okay, in that case, I will take a motion to approve that ordinance.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number twelve-twenty-dash-zero-five-zero-one-two-three. Amending Title II Administration Personnel Chapter two-point-oh-three council. I'll second.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next item is ordinance one-two-one-nine-dash-zero-five-zero-one-two-three. Designates elected commissioners to the departments. In the past, we've done these as individual motions, but I think after talking with the attorney, it made sense to do it as an ordinance. So the ordinance actually summarizes this, I actually didn't write it down here. Health and public safety is going to be Terry Udis. Accounts and finance is going to be Tony Stefanelli. Streets and public improvement is going to be Greg McDermott. And the last one, which we have here, is the public property commissioner, which will be Rich Baldridge. Any questions or concerns about that before we approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twelve-nineteen-zero-five-zero-one-two-three. Designated, designating elected commissioners to specified departments.
I'll second that.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is going to revise various, it's ordinance number one-one, sorry, one-two-two-one-dash-zero-five-zero-one-two-three. Revises various ordinances on board, commission, and committee appointments. This essentially, in the last administration, there was quite a few council members that were on boards in different locations. We have elected to remove a lot of those council members from those seats, because we want to make sure that we utilize our various advisory boards in a much higher capacity now. Anybody have any questions on that or anything they'd like to add to that? All right, if I can get a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number twelve-twenty-one-dash-zero-five-zero-one-two-three. Revised various ordinances on board, commission, and committee appointments. Second.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next one is ordinance number one-two-two-two-dash-zero-five-zero-one-two-three. Changes composition of IVRD board. In the previous administration, we had it to where the four people that represent the IVRD board from Oglesby was the mayor, the streets and public improvement commissioner, and the police chief and the fire chief. We are changing that to go back to what it was previously, to where it's going to be the mayor, the health and safety commissioner, the chief of police, and the fire chief. Is any questions on that? Also, by the way, I should make a mention that our fire chief this year, for the next two years, is the chairman of the board for IVRD, for Oglesby.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one-two-two-zero-five-zero-one-two-three. Revising the composition of appointments to the Illinois Valley Regional Dispatch Board.
I'll second.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Upstand.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Aye. Next one is ordinance number one-two-two-three-dash-zero-five-zero-one-two-three. Appointment of IMEA representative. We haven't seen this one on the agenda for about twelve years, because Mayor Revara did it even as when he was the commissioner for quite a few years. So this is appointing the mayor to the position. Any questions or concerns about that? If I can get a motion?
I'll make a, go ahead. Make a motion, we approve ordinance number one-two-two-three-dash-zero-five-zero-one-two-three, appoint IMEA representative.
Second.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Okay, next one we got is we're going to do the appointments of our, we're going to start with our people that are getting, taking oaths. So I'd like to nominate to the position of city clerk, Becky Clennard. If I can get a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to appoint Becky Clennard as the city clerk.
Second.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next up is to, I'd like to nominate the chief of police to be Mike Marcus.
Make a motion, we nominate Mike Marcus as chief of police.
I'll second that.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next is, we are appointing our, we're going to nominate for fire chief to be Ron Paparella, and for assistant fire chief to be Steve Moltis. If I can get a motion, please.
Make a motion, we appoint Ron Paparella, fire chief, and Steve Moltis, assistant fire chief. Second.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Would you gentlemen want to administer oaths for those individuals?
Sure. I'll start.
You want me to go first, or?
Sure.
All right. Okay, raise your right hand for me, please. Aye, say your name, please.
Hi, Becky Clennard.
Having been appointed to the office of city clerk in the city of Oglesby.
Having been appointed to the office of city clerk in the city of Oglesby.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
The city clerk to the best of my ability.
Of the city clerk to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Madam clerk, congratulations. I'll come up with a few people at the same time. Aye, say your name.
Aye.
Having been appointed to the office of, fire chief and assistant fire chief.
Having been appointed to the office of assistant fire chief.
Fire chief.
In the city of Oglesby and state of Illinois.
In the city of Oglesby and state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of fire chief and assistant fire chief.
Of the fire chief and assistant fire chief.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability, so help me God. All right, next of appointments, there is quite a few, you know, people to appoint, so. He's going to do one, his wife is not available here, so he's going to do it at a future moment. But thanks for, appreciate that. Oh, yes. Right when you were taking your oaths, when you showed, I'm so sorry.
I forgot my robe.
Oh, no, I am so sorry about that, thank you so much for coming. We had appellate court Judge Hettle in the audience today, he was going to swear us in, but I'm so sorry, sir, thank you for coming. Okay. Did a great job, though, thanks. Pinch hitter. All right, I'd like to make a, I'd like to nominate the following individuals for the following positions in the city. City attorney, Patrick Berry. Treasurer, Paul Danikus. Building inspector, Brian Spelitch. Plumbing inspector, Al Stout. Electric inspector, Burton Lavens. For the plan commission, Mike Biagini, Cal Vidigore, Lauren Young, Karen Watson, Jim Clennard, Bob Mentee, Ken Fiesekas chairman, Sarah Volmer, Rich Greening, Jay Repsel, Amy Paparella. For the zoning board, Burton Lavens, Wally Marquette, Mike Kutz, Dan Fitzgerald as chairman, Brandy Day. Park board, Mike Bima, Rachel Lidle, Bill Walter, Brian Del Valley, John Rensengay. Ambulance board, Epolita Salinas.
Epo.
Goes by Epo Lido. That's his full name, right?
Is it really?
Yeah, Epo Lido.
I had no idea.
Epo Lido Salinas. Non-voting member, Kathy Edens, Jim Noblock, chairman, Melissa Lewis, Lorraine Munson, Ron Paparella, non-voting member. LaSalle County Joint Emergency Board, Chief Mike Marcus, Chief Ron Paparella. IMEA, Mayor Jason Kern. Design and Review Board, Karen Watson, Brian Spelitch, Jim Clennard, Ken Fiesekas chairman, Angie Partridge. Police Commission, Kurt Martin, Don Shields, Mike Benjamin. IVRD, Mayor Jason Kern, Commissioner Terry Udis, Chief Ron Paparella, Chief Mike Marcus. Police Pension, Corey Vanshack. Chief Marcus, Evan Dutlinger, oh, sorry, I apologize. There's five people on the board, there's only two that are appointed by the actual city, three are done by ordinance. The two that the city are appointing, Corey Vanshack, Mark Vandy Wingard. Chief Marcus, Evan Dutlinger, and Bob Stone are appointed by their ordinances already. Facade Committee, Eric Mowicki, Jim Clennard, chairman. The economic developer, Kathy Noblock, Brian Spelitch, Brandy Day, Bob Mentee, and the zoning administrator, Becky Clennard. If I could get a motion to accept all those nominations.
I'll give a motion to accept those nominations.
Second.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is to accept and place on file recommendation from the Design and Review Board concerning the property located at one-oh-one South Lewis Avenue. Anybody have any comments on it or anything like that? I just have what's in the notes here from the Design and Review Board. My understanding is that it meets all the requirements for city expectations to go forward with a building permit from them.
I'll make a motion, we accept a place on file recommendation for the Design and Review Board concerning the property located at one-oh-one South Lewis Avenue. Second.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next up is raffle license application from LaSalle County Democratic Central Committee. If I can get a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to pass the raffle license application from LaSalle County Democratic Central Committee.
Second.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanelli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next up, looks like it's the first one of these we do here. Proclaim May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. The city of Oglesby, Illinois proclamation by the mayor. I do hereby proclaim the month of May this year, twenty twenty-three, as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the city of Oglesby, and urge all motorists to join in an effort to improve safety and awareness of our roadways. The only thing, next item is old business. Before I go into the explanation of what the next item is, does anybody have any old business items they'd like to discuss? Okay, so one of the things that we're looking to add to the agenda here is under old business, we're going to put review of tabled items. The plan for that is, as we table items, which is naturally going to occur over time, I want to make sure that there is a means and a method for that to come back to inform the public. There's been a lot of people that's reached out and talked to me that we want to make sure that when they hear about a tabled item, that it doesn't just go away from ever. So we're going to put something in there, so that way if it's been tabled at least a month, it'll come back for at least some kind of update. Now that update might be, we're still gathering more information, or maybe the update is, we found out that it was too costly and we're no longer pursuing it. We do it the way that the public gets informed about that. Next up, public comments over any topic. Next up, public comments over any topic.
Okay, I just want to take an opportunity, just to kind of express to the council, express to this audience just how much I love nights like these. I think the system of government that we have in this country, I'm a civics teacher. I think it's phenomenal that we have the ability to elect our representatives and see this passing of the torch every four years. So I just wanted to note just how excited I am for that regardless of whatever results there were. I want to thank everybody in the council for stepping up and serving. I already like the updates to the departments. Jason, you and I have spoken about that before, so I do appreciate that. Lot more logical than they were before, fixed a lot of the issues that had existed previously. And lastly, I just want to, you know, tell you guys, good luck next four years, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Austin.
Thank you, appreciate that.
It's 2023 and I'm asking again, I think I ask every year for a burn ordinance. Why do we still need to burn? I come home a couple of weeks ago and it's eight thirty at night and my, one of my neighbors works for, one of the people that sells a lot of appliances. And I seen him kept checking boxes. He wasn't burning wood. He wasn't a, it was a big burn pile. And matter of fact, a couple of police officers showed up and they went over there and had a good laugh with this gentleman. And, oh, it's, it's out. Well, then Saturday morning, I went over there and it's still smoldering. And I called Officer Hugo Gonzalez. He confirmed that. So why, when I was told that the fire was out, was it still smoldering Saturday morning? And why is it 2023 and people don't have the right to breathe clean air? Whatever we put out, the people pick out. Put the stuff in a bag, okay? We got, you know, they, they take our tech, no problem. So why, 2023, we do not have a burn ordinance? Crew has one and, you know, I'm here so many meetings and, oh, crew does this, LaSalle does this. Okay, well, they have a burn ordinance, where's our burden? Why don't I have the right to breathe non-smoky air? Yeah, that's what I thought, gear and headphones.
Not, not at all, Drew, I'm listening to you for sure.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, any other comments? All right, okay. All right. Public comments is ended. All right, commissioner updates. Do the same order, do you want to go around the table, I guess?
You start, Tony.
Well, thank you very much, mayor and fellow commissioners. I'm, I'm truly humbled to have the privilege to sit in this seat. And this position and this responsibility is greater than one person. During my time here on this council, you guys can expect to hear a certain theme from me, and that's that we're a team. And we'll work our way towards the goal line together. We're here to help one another, we're here to make tough decisions sometimes, but the one thing that I'm always going to advocate for is getting it right, right from the start, right from the get-go. I'm, I'm excited to be surrounded by good people and capable teammates. I look forward to get, getting positive things done. And I'm grateful to all the people of Oglesby who have put their confidence in me, so thank you. That's all I have.
Along the lines of what Tony said, I'd just like to say thank you to the citizens of Oglesby for electing me to this position. I'm truly humbled, I'm grateful as well, and I promise I'll give you everything I have for the next four years to do right by Oglesby. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Commissioner McDermott.
Well, okay, I just want to thank you everybody for the opportunity. I'll serve Oglesby the best I can. I'm looking forward to working with everybody here on the council. I'm sure we'll do great things. Anybody's going to comment or concern, please give us a call. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the voters for electing me. I will assure our citizens that I did not intend to ever lose sight of the contributions our past councils and elders have put forth to make our city what it is today. They are all a wealth of information and I look forward to any of them offering their insight moving forward. I am hopeful to be a part of guiding our beautiful city to a more prosperous and enjoyable place that we call home. Understand, we, the council do, as we the council do, it takes more than just us. Together, though, we are able to make what was once just a dream a reality that future generations will be proud of. Again, thank you.
All right, mayor's report. I did write something up a little bit here, showing about a minute or so. I'd like to thank Mayor Rivera and the outgoing council for all of their work and efforts for the city. I'd also like to thank Mayor Finley and all of his previous commissioners as well for all the work they have done in the past. I have learned that these detailed efforts we do as a council sometimes can take a great deal of time and energy. And those results might not be readily seen for years to come. Many of the successes in Oglesby are a product of those efforts that were done from many previous administrations. I hope we can say the same thing about our administration formed here tonight in the future to come. It is my sincere hope that not only will we have discussions, collaborations, and decisions that will bring great benefits to the city during our four years here, but set the city on a path to be successful for the decades that follow us. I sincerely thank the residents for giving us the opportunity to serve them. This meeting was intentionally light. Eighty percent of the people up here tonight are in new positions and in the next two weeks, I'm sure there'll be a lot of learning and realizations on everyone's part, mine included. Next meeting, we'll get back to a bit more city business and at that point, we'll schedule our first working meeting. At that working meeting is where we will start talking about some of the plans and we would like to tackle as a council. So let's get to work. That's all I got. I'll ready to take a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Baldridge.
I.
Yudis.
I.
McDermott.
I.
Stefanelli.
I.
Kern.
I. We are adjourned.